...business, public session items for board discussion. This is a public session item and we have a couple of speaker cards. So, we're going to look at item G1. And I'm bringing it up. And this is an item that was submitted to the board, to all the board members. It's from the public person at large. So, it is, "I am formally requesting that the Varela Elementary School property be added as an agenda item on the agenda for the next board meeting dated Tuesday, October 4th, 2016 in an effort to provide further discussion to the residents regarding the safety hazards and health risk associated with the dieldrin. Sincerely, Melissa Hartley." And I just want to quickly read this. It's Ed Code 35145.5. It is the intent of the legislator that the members of the public be able to place matters directly related to school board business on the agenda of the school district governing board. In addition, every agenda for the regular meetings shall provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the governing board on any item of interest to the public before or during the governing board's consideration of the item, as long as it's within the jurisdiction of the district. And this is a member of the public presenting this. This is not a district presentation. But before we go into this presentation by Melissa Hartley, we have some speakers on this G1 item. And so, first I ask, the first speaker is Melissa Hartley. But Melissa, I believe that you are presenting this item, am I correct?
Yes.
Can you incorporate your three minutes into the presentation? I'll allow you the three minutes after, but when you're presenting, we normally don't have another speaker card for that person.
Right, that's my decision.
Would that be okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so you're gonna incorporate that and I will give you the extra time?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The first speaker then is Deborah Roberts.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the board this evening. My name is Deborah Roberts and I am a member of this community and I am here to add my voice to the opposition of moving forward with the Varela property. And there is a petition that has just gone over 100 signatures. I believe that once 100 signatures was reached, that the petition was submitted to the board. It is through change.org. And there's also a group going out into the community that this school will affect and speaking to the residents there. And so far, about 70% of the neighborhood has been personally contacted and it's a hand-carried petition gathering signatures. And so far, 100% of that 70% is opposed to the school being built on this contaminated soil. Or even if you remove the soil, which is a huge cost to the school district, and I'm not so sure that, should this be a cost that the school district absorbs or should this be a cost that the Varela family should have taken care of? I really don't know. The last meeting, I did bring up the environmental impact report, which was, I guess, finalized in 2013. It's over 200 pages. It's a lot to absorb and understand what, you know, the final decision was there. But how long is an environmental impact report good? And at what point does the district decide that it needs to be revised or a new one submitted? I also have, am wondering of the, so the property was given to the school district so that the Varela family could build a community, a private community of over 200 homes. So, that community was built, median age, I believe, is around 34. Homes are 3,000 to 6,000 feet. It's a private community. They have private amenities. And the intention was for this land to be given to the school district so that the school could be built for that community. So, I'm wondering if anybody has contacted that community and of those 200-plus homes, how many of those families would really want to send their kids to school on, you know, at a school that has been built on contaminated or previously contaminated soil? I also don't understand how there was a clean report in '04 roughly and then there's now not a clean report as far as the soil samples. So, I'm not really sure if anybody's calling on those families that is specific to the purpose of donating this property to the school district. And also, is the school district obliged to accept this gift? I know you have, well, at least I read that you have 40 years to use the property or it goes back to the Varela family. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Speaker is Claudia Sibrian.
My name is Claudia Sibrian and I am a resident of Morgan Hill. I have one kindergarten here at Northstrom Elementary. I also live about a quarter mile from the proposed site for the Varela project. I'm here today to speak about my concerns regarding the project for the board's consideration of the issues affecting the community at large. While I have appreciated the district's willingness to take the matter seriously and work to identify a way to clean up the toxic soil at the proposed site, I still do not feel confident that the nearly $2 million will be worth it in the end. For unknown reasons, the dieldrin levels in that soil have rebounded twice after the last attempts to clean up the soil. And in everything I've heard thus far, there is no guarantee that will not reoccur even though a different method will be used. And there have been no plans presented to continuously test the soil in the years following the construction of the school. How will we know that our children and the staff are safe in five, 10, 15 years from now? Additionally, the plans are only to clean up a certain portion of the land, but the rest of the surrounding soil will not be removed. And although it may not have tested as high as other more concentrated areas, it still contains the same toxin and will certainly be a concern for me and it should be a concern for the board as well. I must admit that I frequently take my children on walks along that stretch of Pete Road because I love the scenery there. It's really tranquil and beautiful and the views are amazing. But now that I know what lies in that soil, I certainly think twice about walking there on windy days. That brings me to my next concern about the effect on the surrounding communities during the cleanup process. I feel that it is extremely optimistic to think that the cleanup will go seamlessly and as planned, that there will be zero exposure to the surrounding community. Any slight hiccup in the process to contain the contaminated soil cannot be taken back. Once it's in the air, you can't go around and collect it from all the surfaces it reached or from the lungs it settled in. Just last week, outside play was canceled because of the air quality due to the fire 10 miles away. So, it should be even more concerning, given this cleanup is so much closer than that fire was. Lastly, I come back to the cost. As I listen tonight and previously, bought from members of your teachers' association and service union, how poorly our teachers are paid, I wonder if the funds can be better spent in a more immediate need, which is to pay our teachers more very valuable to us and our service members who are really valuable a better salary. So, thank you for your...
The next speaker is Christina Hildebrand. I hope I pronounced your name correctly.
Christina Hildebrand, yes. Hi there. My name is Christina Hildebrand. I'm the president and founder of the Voice for Choice advocacy, which is an advocacy group. And we educate and advocate for informed choice and transparency of anything that goes into your body, so be it air, food, water, pharmaceuticals, cosmetics, anything that goes into your body, we want you to have the informed choice and transparency of knowing what that is. I live, not in this community, I live in Mountain View, but I was asked to come down here because our organization is a statewide organization. And in hearing about the dieldrin issue in this land, I felt compelled to come down here and talk to you. We have a serious issue among our children. One in 54 children have a chronic disease, cancer, autoimmune disorder, or some other kind of disorder. That is a huge number. And the number of children that that afflicts, you see it in your classrooms. There isn't anything specific. There are many things that could be causing that toxicity, but we know it's toxicity that's causing it. Because the amount of toxicity in our environment, be it in the food, the water, the air, the soil, has been increasing over the years, which is why we've seen these increases in our children's health. Our children are the first generation who will not live as long as the generation that comes before them. And that is serious. That's a really sad state of affairs that we're in. And building a school on a property where you know there is toxic substances and those toxic substances are endocrine disruptors, they're going to disrupt how those children's cells work in their body. That's just a known fact from pesticides, insecticides, toxins. We know this is a toxic substance. You go on the CDC and it explains just how toxic this substance is and all of the different side effects and the unknown side effects that could come from being exposed to dieldrin. So, not only is it that you're building a school on this land, and I understand you've got, you know, potential remediation project that will take up three feet of this soil. The dieldrin in the soil will not be removed by water because that's not how it goes anywhere. How it gets removed and how it can flow is when it's in the air. And it says it on the CDC website, if you look up dieldrin on the CDC website, that it will move in, I can't remember the exact wording, but it will move vastly if it's put into the air. When you're taking up three feet of that soil, it's going to go into the air. And Morgan Hill, we know, is a windy place and it will get into everyone's lungs. People aren't gonna die over this tomorrow. People aren't gonna get cancer over this tomorrow. But in five, 10, 15 years, when Morgan Hill becomes a cancer center, which it very well could be, we don't know whether it will or whether it won't, but you have to take that in. That will be your responsibility and that will be on you. And I ask you to think about this really seriously before you do it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jennifer Selbers.
Thank you for letting me talk tonight. I appreciate it. I'm actually looking to relocate to Morgan Hill. Currently, I live in Daytona, something, living at cost of living. Morgan Hill is definitely something I want to consider. This issue was actually brought up to me by Melissa Hartley. She and I are both activists in different areas. What concerns me the most about this is the toxicity levels that aren't gonna just be addressed for our children, for the community at large. I think Chris and I really got into that. This is an airborne toxin. This is a very windy city and I'm really concerned about the cleanup efforts. It's my understanding that the cleanup efforts are gonna be at Coyote Creek area and that's gonna be actually just north of Morgan Hill. It's gonna be downwind. So, even during, and we understand there'll be about 20 truckloads that are needed to take the three feet of soil out of the area. It's gonna be a tremendous effort. It's gonna be, and it's a real effort. We don't even know the long-term consequences of that. Looking at some historical data was really concerning to me. So, in 2004, we had a .03 contamination level. 2014, that contamination level went to .69. That's huge. And what is it today, two years later? We're seeing a bioaccumulation of the soil. We're seeing some toxicity that we just cannot even explicitly understand or understand how we're gonna clean this up. I just think there's better methods that we can use the money for. $2 million can go towards projects right now, special ed. There's a lot of deficiency areas in Morgan Hill's school district that that money really needs to be put towards. There's a saying, there's never a free lunch in, you know, you can never think of a free lunch. And I think when Varela family initially gave this land away, they didn't want the liability. And the liability is being passed over to the school district. I think that's a tremendous liability issue, the school district, and I don't think we should put it in this one. There's other areas, there's other areas for the school to be built. So, I would like for everybody to take that consideration. There's never a free lunch in our lives and there's a reason why the land was given to us. So, 40 years, I can only imagine what the bioaccumulation will be in 10 years from now. This is just a situation where the money can be better spent towards other things. We need to consider that. We need to consider children's health and also the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tanya Carroll.
Hi, thank you. My name is Tanya Carroll and I'm here again tonight as a concerned parent. My family lives in Alacante, which is about a half a mile from the proposed school site. And at the last board meeting, I spoke about my concerns with dieldrin and how it could potentially cause autism. It's a known neurotoxin. I have a son with autism and I'm very concerned that perhaps, you know, this was a factor in his diagnosis. Tonight, I'm here again to express my concern with building a school on toxic soil. In addition, I'm concerned with the cleanup, as others have stated, and how that could impact neighbors living in the immediate neighborhood or downwind. Since dieldrin attaches to dust particles and we breathe it in and considering how windy Morgan Hill is, the idea of hosing down the soil to prevent it from getting into the air sounds quite dangerous. Since the last board meeting, I have spoken to many of my neighbors in Mission Ranch, Coyote, Alacante, and I have to say, many people are very scared. The main questions are, since the soil was previously remediated, how can we be sure that dieldrin will be cleaned up 100%, not 95%, like was stated back at the last board meeting, and never come back? How deep are the harmful pesticides and what is the school district's plan to ensure that they have dug deep enough? What happens if students and teachers do become sick? Who is liable for that? Was there any testing to see if the toxins leached into the groundwater? That has not been discussed openly, as far as I know. And lastly, is the cleanup process harmful to immediate neighbors or neighbors downwind? An additional concern relates to cost of this project and why there isn't more attention to using pre-existing buildings that have space. Again, my personal focus is on the health aspects and the risks that the school board is taking by moving forward with this project. If students are your priority, the health of the students and teachers should be paramount. This is a very serious decision that should not be rushed. Please think about the quality of life for children, teachers, and your community when you decide and you have a vote. Thank you.
The next speaker is, and I'm not gonna pronounce your last name properly and I apologize, David Gunnam.
My name is David Gunnam. I'm a native of Morgan Hill since 1980 and I currently live within 100 yards of the proposed school site. I grew up here and now raising my own children in this beautiful town. Although I do have concerns about the safe removal of the contaminated soil, I'm actually in favor of building the school. It is obvious that Morgan Hill is growing rapidly with hundreds of new homes being built every year and it seems inevitable that a new elementary school will be needed with the increased population. The northeast quadrant of Morgan Hill is especially seeing exponential growth of the new homes being built in the neighborhoods of Alacante, Mission Ranch, San Sebastian Estates, and Cochrane Standard Pacific Project. With all this population growth, I believe that a school is necessary and this Pete home site is a prime location. Having a school local to the area will also reduce cross-town traffic, which would otherwise be traveling to the currently zoned Northstrom School. From what I understand, the problem of contaminated soil is pretty common and we may run into the same issue if another site is selected. Although I have great concern as a local resident that the construction will stir up these toxic pesticides, I understand that the problem will remain even if the school is not built. I would have to think that these pesticides were used all around this area and not just on this 10-acre parcel of land. It seems to me that the careful and proper remediation of the site would actually benefit the neighborhood in the long run, rather than leaving the soil there to blow around to the adjacent homes in the years to come. I also feel that with all of the current visibility into the issue, the problem will be remediated with much higher concern and sensitivity than it would normally be if some other type of structure were being built. I look forward to having a conveniently located new school where my children can thrive as long as it can be accomplished without risk to our health. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirk Burrell.
How you doing, Morgan? Nice to meet you. My name is Kirk Burrell and I'm candidate for mayor of Morgan Hill. The campaign's really rapping, cranking up and everything is going really good. I'm listening to, I'm over here learning about the school board because I think leadership comes with knowledge in a lot of different areas. So, I'm trying to learn and I'm listening to this thing about the Varela school. And what I'm understanding from what I'm listening to is that you have a site that was given to you and it's contaminated with chemicals and you're gonna talk about cleaning that up. So, what comes to me, what comes to mind, a couple of things, is a couple of questions. Would you put your kids in that school? I wouldn't. And the other thing too is, the money that you save doing this, one lawsuit, whether they prove it to cause and effect, one lawsuit will eat any money that you have saved putting that school there. Now, can you say Flint, Michigan? I'll tell you what, if I become mayor and a 60-minute news team is in my office, I'm not gonna be very happy about it. Now, think hard about what you're doing and who you're putting there. I think our kids are our most precious asset. I hope you make the right decisions. Thank you. My name is Kirk Burrell. I'm running for mayor. Thank you for your support. Use your vote. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, reset that time. I'm sorry.
Okay, so just to recap what dieldrin is. It was banned by the EPA in 1987. The EPA has determined that dieldrin is a probable human carcinogen. Dieldrin slowly evaporates in the air. Dieldrin has a mild chemical odor. You might find dieldrin in soil and water or in homes. Dieldrin can travel long distances in the environment attached to dust particles blown by wind. Dieldrin bioconcentrates and bio-magnifies through the terrestrial and aquatic food chains. Acute exposure to high concentrations of dieldrin can cause seizures and embolions and even death. Prolonged exposure to lower levels has induced headaches, dizziness, irritability, vomiting, and muscle spasms. Dieldrin can cross the placenta and dieldrin has been found in human breast milk. Studies in humans have not addressed whether adverse reproductive effects occur as a result of exposure to dieldrin. Dieldrin can enter your bloodstream through your lungs when you breathe the air through your stomach after eating food or drinking water containing it, or through your skin. Exposure to dieldrin around hazardous waste sites can mainly occur by breathing contaminated air or touching contaminated soil. The British Medical Journal, the Lancet, published a study and this study looked at blood serum gathered from nearly 8,000 women in Denmark in 1976. It found that any exposure to dieldrin increased the risk of having breast cancer and that those with the highest exposure to dieldrin were twice as likely to have breast cancer. The second thing is, dieldrin's lifetime in soil and how long it lasts in the soil, the half-life is about 60 years, as long as it is not exposed to sun. So, it's still in our soil. These persistent compounds, these persistent or ghenochlorine compounds last for years and years and years. So, they're going to be with us for some time in our food supply, in our homes, and all around it. Who is held accountable? According to GeoCon in the PEA, we do not guarantee or warranty, either express or implied, that there is no environmental health or financial risk associated with the specific areas identified in this report. Other areas of the site or the site as a whole, users of this report must evaluate the risk of reliance upon the information herein and assume that risk if any. GeoCon is not responsible for unfavorable results due to reliance on information provided in this report. DTSC will be monitoring the cleanup and are they trustworthy? Well, DTSC is currently under investigation. DTSC shortcomings have placed the health and well-being of whole communities in serious risk. That was by Senator DeLeon, who is one of three leading this. You have to think about hazardous waste as the most dangerous substance we have. It poses the most risk to the public and yet the agency that is tasked with protecting the public is just falling down. That's environmental advocate Ingrid Rostrm. On Senator DeLeon's release that you can find on his website, new report shows DTSC has placed communities at risk. An independent review panel noted that this June, the DTSC is set to lose 14 staff members responsible with recouping site contamination cleanups from responsible polluters. In 2013, the DTSC disclosed its unrecovered costs totaled, one, $184.5 million, or about 10% of all response costs from 1987 to 2012. Other independent review panel recommendations included consideration that creation of a permit appeals board to decide all hazardous waste facility permits, applications that the DTSC has failed to process within three years of permit expiration date. Require the DTSC to mandate the hazardous waste facility permit applicants have adequate financial resources set aside to respond to toxic waste releases at the site in addition to decommissioning costs. Require the DTSC to recover all costs connected with the hazardous waste facility permit decisions. Fund the 14 cost recovery staff positions through 2018 or make them permanent. Strengthen the role of the assistant director of the environmental justice and tribal affairs, including more staff and resources. Increase the DTSC's site remediation account to ensure continued organ site cleanup. How can we trust an agency that is obviously failing to protect other communities with ours? Especially when no one is able to say why it has increased 20 times. 2004, we had .03. 2014, we had .69. DTSC monitored the cleanup in 2004 and gave the green light on remediation completion. Uncertainty, so this is, you'll find this in the GeoCon report as well. The human health screening evaluation results are based on the COPC concentrations detected in the soil samples and reported by previous consultants. It is still possible that there are COPC concentrations in site soils higher than those detected in the samples utilized for this PEA. It is also possible that other non-anticipated chemicals exist in site soil that were not tested for. The problem is, is that in 2004, we were at .03 and now we are at .69. How did the dieldrin level rise 20 times? Was there improperies in the original report? Or does dieldrin wake up from the soil below depending... Or does dieldrin wake up from the soil below depending on the water table from various drugs? Only a scientist and expert can answer these questions. DTSC does not have this expertise. We can skip to the next. So aren't we capping anyway, since we will not be replacing that pit with new soil, which would then also require a RAP, which is more expensive? The PEA on page 5 does say that capping may be effective in parts of this site and it would require annual DTSC inspections and no use for kids and others. Lastly, it may be possible to relocate, cap, and contain impacted soil in an area of the site with clean soil and/or hardscapes such as concrete or asphalt. This remedial alternative would require land use controls to ensure that the portion of the site is not used for school or other unrestricted land uses. For example, residential, daycare, senior care, etc. And a long-term operation and maintenance plan with regular cap inspections and annual reporting to the DTSC. All of these remedial alternatives and many others would need to be evaluated in a removal action work plan. With the most appropriate alternative selected and described. We are not replacing the soil that we're removing, we're putting the school, the concrete layer however, right on top of that removed soil. So we don't know how far down that these toxins can be found. Because if I understood right, DTSC explained that they, or McCloskey explained that they only test six inches below, maybe at that deepest level. So however far that soil goes down is guaranteed to probably have the dieldrin. What about the water table? What happens when it rains and the bottom soil rises? Now, we've just cleaned this soil and we've had a rain and now that soil has risen and mixed with these, you know, six inches of soil that supposedly was clean. 60-year half-life on dieldrin in soil that has not been exposed to sun. So DT, is there, sorry, did this slide skip? No? Okay, sorry. So DTSC said in open session that the confidence level of remediation is 95%. Sounds like a big number, but is it? 38,000 tons of soil need to be removed. That'll take roughly around 2,000 truckloads of soil to be transported to the Kirby landfill. 5% of 2,000 is 100 truckloads. 100 truckloads of contaminated soil in our air. Dieldrin travels very fast in the air, even with monitors around the site. When a monitor goes off, it's too late. Then what? Will the public be notified? At this time, the Department of Toxic Substance Control is being investigated as it has not actually protected Californians from toxic substances. In addition, they are an oversight government agency with zero authority, meaning they cannot demand that XYZ will happen. They are a monitoring organization and not one person that represented the agency was a scientist. California has a department that deals with toxic substances, the Department of Toxic Substance Control. And in 2004, this department stated that the soil was safe after the owners treated the land with bio-remediation that obviously failed. How can we trust DTSC? We have schools that have been built on farmlands before, so what is one more? Well, what we know now, today, is not what we knew yesterday. This field was once an apricot field. Apricots and peaches are the two heavily used pesticide produce because what the chemicals do is they attach to the skin of these fruits. What kind of testing was done on these other locations where schools were put? Maybe the bigger question is, we need to go and revisit those sites and test that soil again. Who oversaw those testing on those sites? Maybe we should be visiting those sites, well, there I go, repeating myself. What matters is the information we have now and the information we have now on this particular site is atrocious. There's one that's, looks like it skipped. We, the residents of Morgan Hill, strongly oppose building the elementary school on a toxic soil property. The Morgan Hill Unified School District Board members must return the donated land and find a healthy, safe area to build the school.
Is that it, Melissa?
Yes.
Okay, is that including, I don't know how much more time, but is that including your other question that you wanted to throw out or?
Yeah, we're good.
Well, good. Okay, so trustee, there's no option on this, but if you do have any questions while Melissa is up there, I would encourage you to ask her.
I have a question.
Trustee on that.
This method here, can you talk more about the information you gathered with this?
So that was just to show you capping in general and what kind of capping is. Where capping is, you're just throwing basically a concrete slab onto property and then building on top of that. So the interesting thing with capping is a lot of commercials, using a lot of commercial uses. My chiropractor actually, his family is part of the Mariotti family and they owned the property that the Great Mall was built on. And they, for the longest time, tried to sell that property, but it was going to cost them, I believe it was like $20 million to clean up the property, so, because they wanted to sell it to developers. Well, developers shied away because that's a lot of money to come out of pocket. So what they did was they sold it to the investors for the Great Mall because for commercial use, you don't have to extract the chemicals, you can just throw a concrete slab on top of that.
Trustees, any other questions? Okay, well, Melissa, thank you so much for the information and I know that the superintendent has your email and phone number and if you wish to communicate, communicate to him.
Okay, great.
Okay? Thank you so much. You're welcome.